All right, let's go along in order. One rise for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the people of our country, to the citizens of this nation. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Change this to the agenda?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor. Oh, um, one change. If the council so wishes to make an appointment for vacancy on the council tonight, we could add item seven or eight, eight, appointment of city council member. We'd be looking to it through resolution nineteen ninety-one, if there are any vacancies on the council and changing a council member. We have a resolution prepared that simply said to fill in the blanks with the individual's name and the effective date of the appointment.
Is everyone okay?
Yes.
Motion by Timmerman, second by Berg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is adopted. Seeing presentation of the operations allowance.
So, on annual basis, the Fire Relief makes substantial donations to the city ranging from twenty-five thousand dollars to all over one hundred thousand dollars per year. Those donations are generally made to our capital overlay fund or through replacement of equipment. This has allowed us over the years to make improvements or major renovation or repair items to the fire made portion of the building, purchase pieces of equipment which improve their services that we would not otherwise have, purchase pieces of equipment that extends the life of our equipment, a number of items over the years. This year, they have asked us to use those donating funds to purchase the replacement of both of our fire roads. So, the total value of that is in the ballpark of sixty-five thousand plus dollars. Those are monies that do not need to be collected from taxpayers in the city and the townships that we serve or pay for that. So, those annual donations that we receive from the fire route have a significant impact that benefit our taxpayers on an annual basis, not only to help keep our taxes down, but also to help our fire department provide a higher level of service to those that have served. So, purpose for this is quite simple, to, one, recognize the fire relief for that, for the generation donations and what we have to do with it. And then after that, we'd like to give a photo with the city council and representatives of the fire relief department. So, at this point, Jody Mokken, president of the relief, is here.
Oh, there's Jody.
As well as other members of the board.
Yep, this is the rest of the board.
Hi, Board.
Hi.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It's amazing what you do and what the Fire Relief Association does, amazing money. I mean, it's, it's pretty incredible, so, this is exciting. Do we get to go see it?
We get to go see it.
On the agenda is public comment. So, if anyone wants to address the council and anything not currently on the agenda, welcome to the tim. I bet you have a, I'll say a change.
Roll it out, it's bad. Mr. Mayor, council members, Bolton Menck, chief, thank you for having. Coming tonight, just as a born member of the Elko New Market Chamber, kind of updating some of the things that have been happening at the chamber.
Exciting news, we're currently interviewing for another position at the chamber to fill as an event coordinator and a person that would work with the current membership on an experienced specialist, making sure that their involvement is as high as it can be. This role is created to increase the effectiveness and attendance to our annual events. We've had some great interviews so far, looking forward to continuing that interview process and just kind of working on perfecting the events we already hold. One such, one such event will be the annual scholarship award. It's kind of a big one because it's a very large goal in 2020 to put that into place. But as our president said it publicly, now we need to make sure that it happens in 2020. And as all you know, on council and working with the city, when a group of business owners gather together, that is filled after hours, after everything has been done, after family and all else. So, it's, uh, for me, for all of us, it's really an exciting time to know that when we're able to give back in that manner, that we've met the goal was to, to do those types of things. So, I would say it's kind of fun to say, "We're here," you know, and all the times you build, you start, you know, you start crawling, you start walking, and then you can kind of stand up and say, "We're here." So, that's very exciting. Another event Monday, we held our annual dinner meeting at the firehouse. Very well-received event. As the theme, theme this year, we wanted to have a little bit more fun, called a mystery dinner. Extremely well-received, the largest attendance we've ever had at an annual dinner meeting. Yeah, half of the people there were not actually members of the chambers. That came from our public, came from guests that were invited, they also had a great time. At that event, the chamber elected new board member for 2020. Elected members Mario Frzone with Garage Door Doctor and Don Whitez with Bodyworks. This would be Mario's first term on the board, we're excited to have him. And this year, we also recognize supporting members which have celebrated their five-year anniversary with the chamber. Some of those would include the New Prague Area Schools, Crossroads Church, Boltman Menck, Thrive and Financial, Josh Malwitz, Holy Cross Catholic School, Scott County Historical Society, Automotive Ingenuity, and A1 Landscapes. We're thankful for them and also members that have been on even over that five-year time span. It's the first year, this is the time of year that much effort is placed into the chamber, getting ready for the annual Christmas tree lighting. I know that the city also supports and helps in many ways. We want to thank you for that support, especially in this upcoming week and time as that comes event, as that event comes close. With a growing city, I personally view this as one of those best events that we can bring people together and celebrate our closeness of the two towns coming together at that event. That's been extremely well received in the past. Chamber intends to continue this for long into the future as well. Two weeks ago, Josh Malwitz, a board member with Thrive and Financial and committee chair for the annual golf tournament, presented a check to the Elko New Market Fire Relief Fund. So, Josh has been that committee head for numerous years now and this last, 2019, highest-attended golf tournament as well. So, we're continuing to see that support swelling. Tying that in with fire rescue days has been a very good result. This time of year, the chambers is focusing, December's kind of a time where we take a little bit of a break from some of the hustle-bustle because we've got a lot of things that came through recently. But we start looking forward to 2020. What's the goal, what's the, how do we set up that calendar, get it, set up in advance? I get those items done. So, one last note to share before I go though is, I'm just going to change that personally to me because it's not coming directly from the chamber, so I'm kind of changing that hat. The CCEC committee this year did send out letters announcing the Halloween party. And so, there were local businesses that were offered the chance to help support that event. And I want to thank the CCEC committee for inviting the businesses to give them the opportunity to show their support and contribute to be involved in that, that city event. So, honestly, it feels good for businesses to make the list, you know, to, to be invited. And, you know, I just want to share that with the CCEC, I hope that message gets through and I hope that response that the committee hoped to attain from that was well-received and that, that it met. Any questions on any activities that the chamber's doing? If you ever need us, just reach out. Thank you.
Anyone else interested in speaking on the public comment? Going once, going twice, all right, over time, it's closed. Consent agenda? Any items they want to call or discuss very briefly? Want to make, one, want to make a move?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by, motion by Timmerman.
Second.
Second by Berg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Mayor, if I might, I want to acknowledge, Mr. Soperson, where they were on the consent agenda tonight.
Oh.
For the Dakota Acres Second Edition.
Oh.
They are, they have been, involved, they're business partners with Dakota Acres First Edition, are finishing out thirteen townhome units that have been constructed, another four under construction right now. And then the second edition is the apartment phase of the development, so we thank you for.
It was a, clearly a really controversial discussion. So, thank you for everything. All right. So, we have a public hearing. Public hearings on the proposed 2019 street rehabilitation project. Before we open it for comment, Rich, did you?
I can give you a brief presentation.
Would you, please?
Who's all here for this item? Okay. Probably forty-five minutes or so. All right. I'll try and move through it quickly. So, we're going to cover the special assessment project process, just to make sure that people know there's quite a few steps involved and to show what the city did and, and some of the things beyond the process. Very briefly, how asphalt streets work, what we did for the project, I'll cover the special assessments, notably, they're down just a little bit from what we presented at the improvement hearing and from what we noticed to the residents affected. And then briefly, the appeal process. So, I don't know that I need to read each of these. I have listed in black the items required under statute four twenty-nine for special assessments. The purple items are sort of extra things we did. I don't know if you all remember the Streets Expo, but we wanted to, in advance of all of these projects, since we thought they'd be an ongoing thing, do some outreach, provide some education upfront about streets and why we're doing this maintenance and the assessment process, that type of thing. The strikeout just means that we have done those items. Tom, I don't know if you have comments about the Facebook, I didn't have information about when Facebook posts were pushed out, but there was additional outreach beyond the formal process in black. On this page, there's one item we haven't completed, and that is accepting the work and authorizing final payment. We are in dispute. It's not, I don't know how severe it is at this point, there's a difference in quantities. And so, I'll cover that when I talk about the assessments. But that's why we have not yet brought forward a resolution authorizing final payment or accepting the work. They do have some minor punch list items, but we typically wouldn't, you know, hold up for that. And then the final, where we're at tonight, we're holding the assessment hearing. The council will take testimony or comments or questions, consider those, and if they feel that they're in good position, they'll move ahead and adopt the assessment rule. I do have an alternative one, we'll cover that, that would lower the assessments from what was most due by, I don't know, it is fifty bucks or something like that. And then after the assessment rule is adopted, the city certifies that to Scott County where it's collected through property taxes. Is anybody interested in knowing how streets work at, at this point? We're good, can move on from that? Briefly, we have a cross-section of a typical city street here, and there are several components to it. What we're dealing with is simply reinforcing this top layer, but what all of these different layers do is help to spread the load from vehicles and trucks to the softer subgrade below that can't typically bear as much weight. So, by putting these different layers of granular material, aggregate base, and then asphalt, we spread that load to where there's minimal deflection on the base below, on the subgrade below. But every time a vehicle pass over a road on an asphalt street, there's a flex. And just like if you take a wire and you bend it and bend it and bend it, it'll start to crack and you keep bending, it'll break. It's kind of similar to that, so those flexes cause stress to the road along with weather and water and ice. So, roads in Minnesota take a beating, that's why they're designed so robustly here. The purpose of this project is just to take out with a milling machine, a wedge, a six-foot wide wedge at the edge of the street on each side so that we'd have the new pavement matching the top of the curb. So, the white layer here is the existing asphalt, we milled out a little wedge and then we overlaid an inch and a half over the whole street. And that's to reinforce the pavement layer that's there to help extend the life. It doesn't replace the street, it doesn't make it last forever, but it should give us an extra ten or fifteen years over the life we would have expected. We're trying to defer the time where we have to replace all of these components. And so, that's the purpose of this. It does have the effect of making it look nice and new, but it's not a cosmetic treatment, it's a structural treatment. Special assessments, a lot of the items covered by state law were in that list upfront, but the city does have a special assessment policy that we use to determine the assessments for a milling overlay project like this. These costs are accessible to benefiting properties. We use a sixty-forty split, the city pays sixty percent, the property owner pays forty percent, except on major collectors, the city pays almost all the cost because those are roads that really serve all neighborhoods pretty much equally, there's very limited private access onto those. We did assess anybody that does have access onto a major collector, the same as everybody else. But for the most part, the city pays the major collectors, which means everybody pays for the major collectors. Minor collectors and local streets, those are roads where there's more driveways. And so, the city pays sixty percent of the cost, the overlay, the assessments are based on cost for the minor and local roads. We use, for this project, a unit-based assessment rather than, you may have heard of, a front-footage assessment. We feel that they're, really the benefit for a house is kind of the same, especially if you look at the layout of some of the lots here, you know, if this guy had to pay on a front-footage basis and this guy had to pay on a front-footage, his assessment would be three times the neighbor, but they, they really use the same roadway for travel. There's no extra benefit because you have more footage. In some cases, there may be, but for a street overlay, we felt the most equitable is to treat all residential properties within limits, the same. We do have a few parcels in the project that paid more, golf course, the bars in downtown Elko because they generate more traffic, and I think the clubhouse with the pool has a larger lot. But all of the homes affected by this are suggested that they be assessed the same amount. The actual assessments, we're suggesting that you adopt a rule with a assessment of thousand sixty-seven oh one per unit. Single-family home is one unit. But that would mean that the ones that were earlier assigned for the golf course and those bigger ones would be somewhat reduced in the same proration. At the improvement hearing, we had estimated one thousand one hundred and fifteen sixty-eight per unit, and that was what was in the notices. However, you can adopt a lower amount if you so choose, and we're recommending you do so. The way I arrived at this is I took, I mentioned there, we're in some dispute. I took the amount that I think the contract can justify, and I didn't go beyond that. So, I'm not paying all what they're asking for, I'm paying what the tolerances are, what the contract supports. And I took that amount and applied it to the overall project and came up with a proration. So, this covers what I think is fair according to the contract. Should we end up having to settle for something different or more? It won't be less than this, but it could be more, the city would have to pick up the difference. That could be something, and if, if, if they got everything they're asking for, we're looking at another twenty, twenty-five grand, something like that, that the city would have to pick up. On a project that's approaching, I think we're in the five and a half, five hundred fifty grand range, five seventy, somewhere in there, so. So, that's how that works. This is based on the lowest cost I think we would be paying the contractor. Appeals, the notices that went out explained briefly the appeal process, but if anybody is intending to file an appeal about these assessments with district court, they would need to have either submitted a notice to the city clerk already, and I have one, I don't believe that party's here, they mentioned they couldn't make it, or presented to the mayor tonight in writing. If they don't do that, they would not be able to continue on with an appeal to district court. I won't go into the process of, of an appeal, that's legal advice, and they'd have to either look that up or talk to an attorney, but it does have to go to district court if they wish to appeal an assessment. I'm not hearing much objection, I see one party's here. I haven't heard anything outside of the meeting other than the other notice, so.
So, we have one party that is, is intending to appeal.
They've submitted a notice, whether they actually go ahead, we don't know, we can't predict that.
Andrea, what is the, is process?
So, at that point, it's time when they have to. Do an appeal with this district court and then the city would have to defend that appeal. We call the commissioners.
So, you go to district court, state the case as to why it's.
Standard district court case.
But as to why it's not inequitable, I mean, what is the?
Right, so their argument would be that the benefit, that it doesn't justify the cost, it's unnecessary.
That's all I have, but I could entertain questions from the council, suggest turning it over to anybody in the public who wants to speak.
All right, just in general, the quality of work, seem, you have been?
I, I don't really have any issue with the quality, we had some minor, we had one car that got some oil on it, and I believe they were responsive in dealing with that. Other than that, they were pretty cooperative to work with, and I think the quality is, the disputes in the thickness, they put on quite a bit more than we had called for, which results in a tonnage overrun immensely beyond the tolerance called for in the contract. So, I'm not, the assessment's not based on that full amount, it's based on what we can, what's in the contract for tolerance.
But in general, you feel they're.
But otherwise, yeah, I, I don't know, Cory, you feel?
Yeah, no, I mean, they got caught under the weather and some streets were left open, but, I mean, when it's raining all the time?
One, they also paved Marketplace Boulevard outside of this project, that was between them and Ryan Contracting. But what I heard from the folks over at Ryan was, oh, when we heard it was GMH, it was a no-brainer, and that was the contractor. So, they apparently have a pretty good reputation, at least in the mysteries.
Great. It was very, 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 I mean, public.
I don't know if it's necessary, we live in a neighborhood, so it goes in with them. Call the county. You should know that we got the scene, citing individuals.
Open the public hearing at seven twenty-six. Anyone here to just approach the podium, state your name and address?
Steve Benkin, ninety-three seventy-six Glenboro Drive. I'm wondering why I get to pay twice? I have, my section of the street has already been paid, have been paved. I received the first notice, my neighbors received the first notice, they, I've talked to two other families that are right next to me and across the street, and we've all, I don't know why we're getting hit twice. The portion of Glenboro that's listed here is not my area, so why do I get to pay twice?
So, if they didn't pave in front of your house, you shouldn't be getting assessed.
If they did pave in front of my house already.
Do you have only one lot?
Yes.
Then you should only be getting assessed once, so if there's an error or some reason.
So, when you say that you're assessed twice, this is the first paving project we've done as a city with overlays?
I, I received one of these about a year ago.
So, that was the improvement hearing, there were no assessments associated, we have to do two hearings. We have to do the improvement hearing where people can come and say, "I don't want this project, I hate this project," or "I love this," and the council has to decide whether to move ahead. This is the assessment hearing where we actually have to decide on the amount and whether to proceed with adopting the assessment rule. So, you would only be assessed once, there was no assessment associated with the earlier one, so that was confusing.
So, you sent out paperwork a year ahead? I, I don't understand because this is, so the work was done, but we haven't paid for it?
That's right.
I asked the same question yesterday.
So, on our state statute, in order to do this type of project and with this type of financing, we require under state statute to hold the hearing in which the council determines that the project is necessary and that they're going to do the project. And that, and we have to send notices and do send notices to people that are affected by the project so that they can come to the council and say, "I think this project is necessary or not, I would like to do the project," and do them. That was the first notice for the same project. After the project is, and at that time, we do notify individuals that this is what we expect, and we have to advise the council, this is the expected cost of the project.
Once the project is complete, typically, you then actually have to adopt the assessments based on the actual project cost, and that's the point at which we're at tonight, and that's the point at which an individual can appeal the actual assessment. So, the first one, if you think of it, is a notice that we're intending to do a project, and this one is we've done the project, now based on final project cost, this is going to be the actual assessment, not just the estimate.
Everybody thinks you're getting hit twice.
I'm looking at the.
Everybody I've talked to, they said, "Why are we getting hit a second time?"
Can the, Tom, can the city post something on either Facebook data or something like that, just clarifying?
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the list right now, and there's no duplicate names on it.
No, what you make, it's just probably not clear, and, you know, it's, it's a, you get a notice that's this long, it's got a table on it, there's a lot of, so, we could clear that, that's good feedback. I've never had that happen before, but you can certainly try to clear it up with social media.
In all seriousness, I called Tom yesterday, thinking, almost asking the exact same thing, so.
I can understand if, if there's, if it's right in front of my lot, that makes sense, I understand that.
Yeah.
But this appeared that, it was already done, but I was getting hit a second time, so. All right. Thank you.
You saved a thousand bucks.
So, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, good reading of the report.
Yes, please.
So, city did receive yesterday a letter of appeal from Pat Morgan and her husband, they reside at ninety-three ninety Glenboro Drive in Elko. They were unable to make the hearing tonight because they're out of state, so they got submitted an appeal, the email, the content of which has been placed out for council for consideration.
Are you going to read, and we're not going to read the?
If you'd like me to, I certainly can.
I mean, if you don't mind, please.
My husband and I live at ninety-three ninety Glenboro Drive in Elko, Minnesota, five-five-zero-two-zero. We would like to appeal the assessment based on the assumption that property taxes should pay for road improvements. We have been in Minnesota for two years, and upon moving here, we discussed with our realtor if there were any more taxes we would be responsible for with our home besides property taxes. The answer was no. When the road improvement began, we were not sure what needed to be improved. The drainage worked as it should, and with snow being, and with snow blowing, the road would be the same after the next winter unless some other material was used to last longer. Secondly, the quality of the road improvement is sub-quality. The side of the road do not have a finished look, and if someone thought it would improve the resale of our homes, it will not. Glenboro improvement stopped before it finished Glenboro, which is a complete eyesore. Either finish the entire length of the road or do not do the improvement at all. We are on fixed income, retired teachers, and this added expense was not anticipated and never crossed our mind that it would be accepted by a road improvement company that our property taxes would not completely be paid for. If we file an exemption to not be included in the assessment, please let us know how to do that. Thank you much for reading my narrative.
Thanks, Tom. All right, so any, I suppose no one else is here to comment on it, so we have a resolution in front of us?
I would, I'd request a motion to close the public hearing.
I thought we did this within the public hearing, maybe that's on the agenda of the public hearing.
As a total item, normal procedure would be to close the public hearing and move on to the action, otherwise, technically, the public hearing remains.
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Berg. Second by Seepersad, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing closes at seven thirty-three. All right, so we have a resolution, nineteen eighty-five. So we have a resolution, 1985, in front of us. Before we take motions, is there any comments or any discussion? Any motions to approve?
Motion to approve, resolution 1985.
Motion by Councilmember Bird, second by Councilmember Timmerman. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. That concludes that item, and so we're out of general business.
One item out of general business tonight, Mayor, item A, which would be consideration of resolution 1991 declaring the vacancy of the Elko New Market City Council, appointing a new city council member earlier this evening under special means that we would be posted to the city council and conducted interviews of four candidates for the position. At this point, the council would like to move forward, maybe simply to identify an individual and effective date for the resolution.
Yeah. So council members are happy to discuss them at this point. Four candidates for qualified candidates in 1991. Why? If you will help us in any different ways and go through each candidate, we can kind of start with, maybe for where a gut is, how would you, you know, like to proceed?
Where a gut is at, maybe, or it would be better, I think?
I'm sorry.
Probably what we're, maybe where a gut feeling is at, maybe, I think would be...
Okay.
Better. You guys want me to go first?
Sure.
Okay. I'm thinking Amanda.
Okay.
And there's, I have not forgotten her first interview from last time, which is really impressive, and for me to not forget it is a big deal. And there's something, I think, to be said for the reapply. And she's obviously got the motivation and the determination to keep trying, so...
Okay.
That's where I'm at.
I can go too. I'll go, I...
I hate sounding cliche, but this is going to sound cliche. We have four good candidates. We really do. We had a former mayor, multiple-term mayor, and Bob Crawford, who had applied. I don't think you can discount how, he did put in a lot of time and energy in trying to shape the city and is extremely knowledgeable. I don't think that can be discounted. Just, I'll give my personal opinion. I do think this council has moved forward, and I think we need to continue to move forward. And as much as I respect Bob, I, I just, I feel we're in a, we'd be best moving forward with a fresh face on the council.
Correct.
Greg, I see him in the back room. All due respect, Greg's, or not all due respect, just to be upfront, Greg's my next-door neighbor and a friend of mine. One of the smartest guys I know, and he's not going to be the one that's going to tell you that. It's going to be everyone that knows him. So I think he was prepared, and I think would serve this council really well. Bryce, I haven't met you much previously. I think our paths crossed maybe once before. I love the, I love the personality you would bring to the council. And I think your background in law enforcement as well as real estate can be very valuable. I've seen Amanda apply three times, and I've, or I think twice for the city council, once for a planning commission, if I have it right. I guess if I were to just pick someone, I would pick Amanda, and that would be, I love the dynamic we have on our city council. Pretty much, we get 100% attendance for all meetings. We have good discussions. We have respectful discussions. I think everyone comes from the same place where they care, and they want to do what's best, and they want to treat everybody with respect. And I want, in addition to our city council, someone who's willing to learn and has that same passion. If you've applied for something three times before, that passion's clearly there. So Greg, I hope we're still friends, but I'm going to, I'm going to go with, I would go with Amanda.
I like the persistence of Amanda. I was in the interview process for the planning commission and for the other council seat before. I would definitely say Amanda. Not that Bryce and Greg, you guys bring a lot to the table. I truly think you both have a future, just here in Elko New Market at some point in time, so don't give up. But I definitely would say Amanda as well, just the persistence and...
So this is why you wait till the end, too? Because my vote really doesn't matter? So now I can...
I'm hoping to do that.
So now I can go along with it, and it's all good. No, I mean, I completely agree with everything everybody said, so I...
Let's move forward a minute. All right. So we have a resolution, 1991.
Yeah. So I think the next planning discussion is just the effective date. You could make it effective as early as December 10th. That reasonably may not provide sufficient time to do orientation with Amanda based on her schedule, which I don't know at this point. Otherwise, you can make it effective on the 19th. It's really a council, it's really a council decision. I don't know that there'd be any need to set the effective date later than the 19th, though.
I would say the 5th.
I would say the 5th. Get her in here as soon as possible.
Sure.
Sure.
All right. So is anyone wanting to make a motion?
Motion to adopt the appointment 19.91 to Amanda Novak.
Effective December 5th, 2019.
Motion by Timberman.
Second.
Second by Seeperside. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, guys, very much, and congratulations, Amanda. Welcome.
Now, one thing I would want to suggest to the other candidates is we, not frequently, but we do periodically have openings on commissions and other opportunities to engage with the city. In fact, Amanda, after she applied for council, not that long after, there was an opening on the planning commission that she had applied for. I would encourage you that if you have interest in those areas, it's a good way to get engaged with the city, develop a deeper understanding, and still have influence in shaping the city going forward. So if you do have an interest, just keep an eye out. We post it on the city's Facebook, we post it on the city's website. And if you just want to stay engaged, city staff, me especially, is very available. If you just want to stop in and talk about what's going on and stay engaged that way in the interim.
All right. So, moving on to reports. Public Works is next. Do you have anything for the court? Police Department.
Just a couple of points. One, established a formal lunch with the chief program. If you saw that at the elementary school, it's been a huge success. When the kids get SOAR awards for good behavior, they get a couple of different options, and we get a VIP table right by the office and get to have lunch. So it's been a fun program. And then I was recently asked to take a position on the Southern Valley Alliance for Better Women's Board, a director. So that first meeting's December 2nd, and I'll find out if I get on that. Otherwise, very excited for the addition going on. That planning has started. And we have, Melissa Wertz, you all know, has decided to take a part-time police officer position to work on other business avenues. And we're in the process now of hiring for a full-time police officer, and as of today, we have 12 applications. And that's a really good, strong sign for us to have that many this early, as a majority of them, as Bryce will know, come in the last day or two of the application process. So a lot of exciting things for us, and moving forward.
Nothing from the fire department? Engineering?
I'm pleased to report that it looks like we got all four petitioners for sewer at Woodcrest for this year hooked up.
Nice.
I was there yesterday afternoon, and they were finishing up the last one. I didn't get a chance to confirm it today, but I assumed that it was done, and so I'm really happy with that because we didn't know if we were going to make it with the weather we meant this year. So, yeah.
Community development?
A number of my reports, I'm sure Tom has advised you in council updates, but you are aware that Christmas Pines was paved. They're pretty much done with construction for the year. There's still a second lift of paving and landscaping and some punchless items that will be completed probably next year. We have received a building permit application for that development that we can issue. The intent is that that would be a spring parade model. Boulder Heights was paved as well. It's my understanding that the city will not be paving, I'm sorry, snowplowing those streets this year. The developer is just walking away, not intending to build any houses in the development over the winter. Dakota Acres First Edition has been filed, I believe, since the last update, community development update report, and the townhouse building is under construction. The Edelman, Pete's Hill has ceased any construction for the remainder of the winter. And there's a planning commission meeting on Tuesday night. We will be giving the planning commission a report on the AUAR. It's an environmental study for the Edelman property. The intent that would be passed on to the city council for authorization of the 30-day review period. There's a little bit of work yet to do between the city and the developer before it gets to city council. But as soon as they're finished with their items, it will be before you, hopefully, sooner than later. And then we will be giving the planning commission also an overview of the updated comprehensive plan. Work on the comp plan had really ceased for the last year, and during that time, we brought on three new planning commissioners. So it is a chance for us to give them kind of a introduction, education to the 2040 draft comp plan. They'll hear it at least one more time before it gets to you. If you have any other questions?
Just in case anybody gets any calls, we are aware there was a big mess left on 273rd after some erosion control work. Contractors been made aware of it, that we wanted cleaned up. I haven't been able to get down there to see if they addressed it, but we're on it. So if you get complaints.
Parks, let's see, C.C.E.
I was not at the last meeting, but they just recapped on the Halloween party.
Okay.
So just changes for next year, and that's it.
Other reports? Scale? I guess I don't have much of an update on scale beyond that.
I have one brief update. The data analyst that was recently hired by the county through the Scale Initiative gave a first-quarter report to the Service Delivery Committee, reporting on the initial activities. Recall, some of the initial initiatives was to work with law enforcement to get a better understanding of data, data availability, and what was available for analysis. One of the areas of focus was staffing as well. The direction from the Service Delivery Committee was for that individual to move forward with trying to pull together a staffing model that could be used in, within the county. You recall from when Brady Giff gives work staffing load that we currently use a model that's based on the International Chiefs of Police Association model, but there are some weaknesses to it because a lot of the, some of the underlying assumptions are based on nationwide numbers and things like that. It also doesn't take into account community policing elements and time and resources associated with that, and a lot of communities are in a similar situation. So that is, the direction was to do that. One of the interesting things that came out of that conversation is that when they were looking at how staffing decisions are made in a lot of communities, there's only two law enforcement agencies in the county that actually use a data-based decision-making process, and we're one of them, and we've been doing it for a decade, over a decade. A lot of them are just strictly budget-based, that we have a need and can we afford to do it, and it's not, doesn't put the same depth of analysis that we do. The other item that they started talking about was, fire was mutual aid related to law enforcement, having a better understanding of that related to services. In my opinion, that's more of a northern portion of the county question overall because of the proximity and continuity of those agencies. There's a lot of moving back and forth and getting, developing a better understanding and what's driving of that is an important issue for those agencies. With us, it's more so of quid pro quo with the sheriff's office and covering and understanding that. We have to be upfront. We were the recipient of extra attention from the sheriff's office for a long time before our department has reached the current level and will continue to be for a while. But as we also grow, we're also providing more assistance to them in the immediate township area when they have deputies that can't respond immediately on urgent issue, you know, on serious issues. So that's, that's another element for the southern portion of the county. The third item that they started to direct Jesse Rudy to start looking at was also fire, fire service and basically meeting needs. Again, northern part of the county, the issue that has been raised is basically meeting daytime duty crews and being staffing, and also a number of stations. There are portions of the northern portion where they have stations within different jurisdictions, which are in relatively close proximity to each other, and I think they're trying to find a way in scale fashion to more efficiently deliver the service. In the southern portion of the county, I think it's going to tend more towards response time and fire districting boundaries, and whether or not there's really a compelling need to take a look at that or not. That's just an initial item that just came up. I'll keep the council advised if anything meaningful's coming out of it related to that.
All right. Excuse me, M V T A?
Nothing that, we currently aren't attending, and there wasn't anything meaningful this last, that required our attendance last night.
I-35?
Most unable to attend.
Yep. All right. Any discussion by council? Any motions to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bird, second by Timberman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is closed. Thank you, everybody.